All right, we're gonna call this hearing to order. Jeff, can you please, uh, roll call?
Mr. Pohavich?
Here.
Mr. McNulty?
Here.
Mr. Bellis?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
All right. Tonight, uh, we're here to discuss the rezoning application Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero seven, um, for the property on East, uh, U S, uh, twenty-three, south of Orange Center Drive, which is currently farm residential and being requested to be planned commercial and office district. Guess we can start with staff comments if you wanna open up with that.
Yeah, so we, we updated the staff report, uh, for zoning commission members. Uh, I'm just gonna briefly go over changes that were on it from the previous staff report. Um, touch base on some of those changes, uh, some added comments that we, that we made. First one is the open space. Uh, the total open space provided is forty point five percent, roughly twelve point six three acres. Uh, with the initial submittal, it was provided was forty-three percent open space. Uh, provided thirteen point four eight acres. The next one would be, uh, parking. Uh, they increased from one point five spaces per unit in the multifamily to two parking spaces per unit proposed with the multifamily. Then lighting, they requested a divergence. Uh, they stated that, uh, the heights for the fixture will be equal to or less than surrounding property fixtures. Heights as Walmart, Kohl's, Meyer, and the lot formerly containing Giant Eagle. Under signage, uh, they're requesting the maximum height allowed for a monument style freestanding sign, uh, to be increased from eight feet to sixteen feet. Uh, the previous sign was at twenty-two feet, five and a half inches. And if you go down to additional staff comments, uh, the staff is requesting more details on the O E P A covenant area. Uh, we're requesting to have a set distance from the property line. Uh, they, they give a total acreage for each of those areas, but do not provide how far from the property line that it would take. Uh, this helps enforce this. If zoning gets a complaint, we can go out and make sure that, that area is not being disturbed from that distance. Um, and then also it needs to be included on the landscaping plans. Then if you look at number twelve on the staff comments, uh, we added to add the disclaimer. Uh, we provided this as part of our comment sheet, uh, with the applicant. Uh, at the beginning of the text, uh, this states, this disclaimer will state that the text that they are using is the most current text from our zoning code. And number thirteen, uh, staff request specific architectural materials and standards are outlined in the development text for the multifamily apartments. Uh, number fifteen, the staff request that specific uses for the clubhouse pool and multifamily residential be included under the permitted uses section. And then number seventeen, uh, staff is requesting either to list all the divergences that are requested under section fourteen point zero six B or state to see exhibit J one and to make sure that all divergences that are being requested are on that list. And then we did have another comment that came up late, uh, after this. Um, one of our concerns, uh, and questions is, uh, the interior roads and streets for the multifamily development, uh, we're requesting that they are privately maintained and have something in the text stating that those will be maintained privately. And then we have a couple of comments on the technical review. Um, under the Delaware County Engineers Office, uh, the Engineers Office has stated that the traffic impact study had been submitted, uh, and that it was completed. Uh, however, we do not have any, uh, formal letters or recognition from Engineers Office or ODOT, uh, that they've been approved at this time. Uh, so we request that that gets submitted with the application. And then with the Orange Township Fire Department, uh, they had received plans from the very first submittal, but they have not received any updated plans. So they have not been able to review it, uh, so their site plan has not been reviewed or approved at this time. So we request that, uh, whatever new plans, uh, if it gets revised after tonight, that those plans get submitted to the fire department as well. Then under the Orange Township Parks and Operations Department, uh, the staff is, would still prefer the multi-use paths to cross to the west side of the street of Orange Center Drive at the further, uh, northern entrance of the multifamily, uh, to cross to the west side, as this would provide a better opportunity for trail connection across Hidden Rubenes in the future, as the trustees, uh, own the cemetery and it's township property that will be easier to put the trail in, as there are some utility issues that the township staff is concerned with on the east side, uh, up by Hidden Rubenes Drive. Um, we provided a map with a red line that kinda shows the area that they are looking at. And then also staff would like a north-south connection from Orange Center Drive to the south Walmart complex along the outlet, uh, outlets and south past the fuel center. Uh, we also included a, a proposed map, um, that, uh, staff was supportive. Um, we're trying to figure out the best way to cross the fuel center safely. Um, so we have it going around. Um, and then, uh, Roads and Operations Department suggested there's a concrete slab that comes off of the building south in the Walmart complex, and they think that would be a good access point for that trail. Uh, they could come off that concrete and go straight across there. And then the other update is, uh, the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, uh, at the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, uh, heard the application at the January twenty-seventh hearing, and their recommendation was denial. However, they did, uh, state that if the township approved the version of this application, there were some issues that they shot, thought should be addressed, um, and those were provided. And that is all the new information that we have at this time.
Okay, thanks Jeff. Um, does the applicant wish to come up and, and address maybe some of the changes and, and, uh, from the last time we met? Uh, and some of the comments, um, it came up in the last meeting, you know, maybe, you know, look, there's been some changes to the plans and, and signage. Uh, maybe just walk us through those.
Name and address, right?
Yep.
Dustin Doughty, two fifty West Old Wilson Bridge Road, Worthington, Ohio, four three zero eight five. Thank you again for letting me come back and speak to you on a short notice as well. Appreciate you allowing us to come speak about these changes. As was mentioned, there were quite a few changes that we made in response to some of the comments that were made last time to help address some of the standards and requests that were made. There are several items I'd like to get clarification on as well tonight, just because of the, the number of things that were requested and commented on, some conflicted with what we discussed last time as well. But I just wanna get some additional clarification today on how we should move forward so that we can implement those appropriately. The, uh, first thing, going through the comments. Um, should we, should we just, do you have them, this memo? Do they have this memo?
Yep.
Maybe that's the best place to start, if that's okay?
Yep.
And we could start there and then come back to the staff's report with the additional stuff. Um, with respect to the number one, working with council to establish a joint economic development district, we did receive some documents and information regarding that. I was wondering if, if more could be provided on, on that of how to proceed? Although there was an agreement that was forwarded to us for the JED, there lacked any financial information that would be associated with it. I'm wondering if we could help stimulate that conversation or who I need to talk to to be able to get that, that document?
That, that would be our office. Um, it would be happy to, to talk to you.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's, that's really not an issue from our perspective.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, going down, we can provide material, material colors and details for the buildings. Those, are those specific in reference to, you, you wanna see boards, like handheld boards? Otherwise, there, there was a sheet within exhibit G one that, that had that information. Uh, and I'm, I'm just wondering if that is sufficient? Or do you actually wanna see material colors and, and, and boards printed on?
Um, I'm assuming that you don't know, you know, what all the outlets are gonna be. Um, we would typically recommend just including a list of materials that you, uh, permitted materials that you would use in the development text.
Okay. Excellent, okay. Do color renderings with, with drive-throughs? So there is currently, uh, about a twelve-inch curb shown around one side. Um, we'll, we'll reduce that curb to, to eliminate that, but that is gonna be the drive-through. It's the one that, that's opposite the parking. The dumpster for the BJ's is gonna be a, a trash compactor that's located in the southeast corner of the building. It's located directly next to the, the three loading zones. So if you look at the east facing elevation, you'll be able to see, um, some fencing around there. What we can do is we can show a more detailed zoomed-in elevation of that one very specifically, but it is that, that trash compactor that's gonna be located there. And it says there's no color details, we, no color details we provided. This pertains to the apartments in reference to the color screening details. There was an exhibit, um, for G twenty-one, which was the color and elevations for the dumpster. Is, is that, is there something more that you wanted to see in conjunction with that?
Is, is that for all, all the dumpsters?
Yeah, that's gonna be the, the apartments and the outlets.
Okay.
It's the exact same one.
Okay. I think if, if you had that specified on there, that is for
Okay.
what it's for.
We'll just clarify that and specify. Uh, color denser enclosure for the apartments will be addressed. Uh, then, the next one was the envi- uh, the Ohio EPA environmental covenant. Just to give you a little bit of background on that, due to the crossing that we're making with a three-sided box culvert, we're not gonna be impacting the actual stream itself. We're not gonna be impacting the floodway. Um, we're not gonna be impacting anything in an ecological environmental standpoint there, with the exception that the Ohio EPA does have an eighty-foot setback, but they allow roadway crossings through there. So because we are gonna be impacting things outside of the floodway, there, that streamside buffer has to be mitigated. Part of that mitigation is we are going to do an environmental covenant, both on the west and the east side. And it's an acreage calculation. It's not necessarily a linear footage, it's not an offset, it's total acreage. So whatever acreage is that you're going to be affecting by the roadway and the culvert installation, that's the acreages you have to, to mitigate and offset. We have an exhibit that shows that, what we're impacting, what we're offsetting. So theoretically, it's a big triangle, and then, then it's a, a big rectangle, but it's not necessarily directly offset from a property line or, or a, a stream center line. So if we provide that exhibit, would that be sufficient for your understanding and knowledge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would work.
Uh, we will show that on the landscaping plan so that it is called out, and we'll make sure that their, their symbols called out on the landscaping plan as well. Then comes the, the number seven, the height of the sign. So we did originally propose a twenty-two and a half foot sign. We lowered that based upon some of the comments that we received, uh, last time that we met, of being able to reduce that. We do realize that your code does request and specify an eight-foot, just based upon this use and, and where we were located on the site, we are respectfully requesting a, a larger sign and divergence. So we were able to minimize that down to sixteen feet, and would like to know if that would be considered for, um, uh, an approval.
Is that the only monument sign you're proposing?
That is correct. So there are no more monument signs on the site. We're not proposing a monument sign for the multi-use. We're not proposing anything further for each of the out parcels. Um, it, it is truly only for, uh, the commercial anchor tenant.
Is, is there a reason why it's at the intersection of Orange Center Drive on the north side and not more directly in front of the BJ's?
It's gotta be, my understanding, it's gotta be fifty feet, they, from, uh, an access. It needs to be located fifty feet, so you can't move it, uh, along the frontage further to the south.
That's, that was an overlay district.
Oh, no. Oh, okay. Well, we would happily be able, with that being said then, so I apologize because this has been a long process. There's a lot of codes that we had to go back and, and reevaluate. So with that being said, we would gladly like it much further to the south, to be honest with you. Um, much closer to where we're gonna be putting the fuel center so that it, it's directly in proximity to there, as opposed to the, the right and right out.
Yeah, the biggest setback would be from the right-of-way. Well, depending on where that is, depending on how much square footage you have, will depend on what, what kinda divergence you'd need to seek for that.
It's eight foot
For that, okay.
Foot from the right-of-way, I think is how it goes up, is that correct?
Um, it starts out at fifteen feet from the right-of-way. The minimum is fifteen feet. Then it goes back, there's a square footage on it.
We were to offset it from the right-of-way, the maximum distance, whichever that is. I think it's about fifteen, fifty feet or so.
Yeah.
We, we would be able to put it further to the south, closer to the fuel center. And then I think the maximum square footage is one oh eight, for, based upon code. And I think we're requesting right now one twenty-two and a half, based upon measurement. So the divergence would, would be both for the, the square footage, but the square footage is also based upon the increase in size that we're requesting as well.
So, I mean, the, the previous sign was twenty-two, last meeting, is that correct?
Twenty-two and a half, that's correct.
Twenty-two and a half, so there's been a, um, where, where are we at now? Was it sixteen?
Yeah, we lowered it six and a half feet.
Yeah, so six and a half feet reduction. And it's, I don't know, what do you, what do you?
This, this is the monument sign, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, I don't see any reason it needs to be that, that big. The fuel center's sitting with BJ's, it's sitting out front, you're going to have big signs on, on BJ's. I, there is no trees, there's nothing in the area to limit visibility. I think you'd have to give us a reason.
Um, part of it is, is what we discussed previously, is that, that it's setback from the roadway. There, there's a significant setback from the roadway where the anchor tenants located. So even, even though that there is potential visibility with no foliage that's proposed along that right-of-way corridor, the building itself is still setback very, very significantly. And
Yes.
ju- just like some of the other anchor tenants in the area are setback that way, that they've got a monument sign just to the south of our properties in a very similar fashion. So we're, we're respectfully requesting something just like what they've got in, in the area. The
Issue being, unless I'm mistaken, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, the monument sign for like the Walmart and Kohl's no longer meets our zoning code standard when they were first, um, built. That might have been fine, but they don't meet our current standard. The closer analysis might be like Menards or something down the street, which is substantially set back, but still has a more, um, code-compliant signage.
Do you recall what their sign height was?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but I'm sure Michelle or someone could look it up.
We can provide that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that, I would be happy to know.
Sorry, Michelle.
You know, you know, part of it is, is that there are significant out parcels that are located along that corridor. You know, those out parcels are gonna be able to provide some, some blockage as you're going by. You know, if you travel at the, the posted speed limit, which is what, forty-five? But everybody goes a little bit faster around twenty-three through that area anyways, um, roughly over fifty. The, the window from actually being able to see that building starts to shrink. And then that's another reason why we want that, that monument sign to be located out by the right-of-way at such a height, so that, that visibility at that speed is something that you're able to, to see.
I would argue that, that, that's a pretty congested area with lots of traffic lanes. And that traffic probably isn't going to get to fifty, to sixty miles an hour through that section. It will be on there, yes. But I think, I think through there with everything that's sitting there, you're, you're just at the very north end of it. Everybody has already looked at all the big boxes, Walmart, of course, the Giant Eagle isn't there, but Meyer across the street, Home Depot. You're in a congested area. I, I'm just not sure I see the need.
But, do you have to?
Dirk.
Just my thought is that I'd like the consistency to be there. So, you mean, if, if the other retailers who are right next door have a, have a, you know, you know, more consistent sign to be from one retailer to the next to the next, that's what I'd like to, to see remain in place versus a reduction in the size, so to speak. So, you know, and I, I guess I can see your perspective in that, hey, I got these other retailers that are doing it. And, and you did bring it down in size to some degree, so I might add, add, uh, some sort of consistency there as well.
Do, do you have to be a member of BJ's to use the gas station?
Yes. That's what I was reading today.
My understanding is yes, you, you do have to be a member.
So it's a, it's a destination place, right? I mean, you, you're, you're gonna know they have fuel there.
So I'm assuming on your vein, it's like a Costco or Sam's Club
Exactly.
where
The visibility may not need to necessarily be there because you, you have to be a member. You know you're going there, I mean, I don't, but, anyway.
Well, please take into consideration that the, the monument sign isn't just for the gas station itself. It, it's to be able to promote the club. So just like you said, that, that there is a very congested corridor with lots of other commercial competition in the area. So one of the things that we wanna be able to do is make sure that we're known and that they can see it along that corridor as well, as they're, as they're making their way for shopping. Another reason why we're proposing not just an eight-foot monument sign, but something that's a little bit larger for the, to stand out within that congested corridor.
Typically, as I am looking for businesses, what stands out to me is whatever that business's logo is and their logo colors. That, that, that's what you're typically looking for. And, and BJ's, you're gonna be well seen at your fuel center and, and the signs that are there. You'll have big signs, and you're not as far back as the Menards. Now, I'm, I'm gonna stand and disagree with that.
Um, well, I would, I guess, recommend that we take a look at what Menards, I think that's a good recommendation. It's, it's, I think, I mean, obviously, it's probably a little bit above our, our code, what it allows. It looks like at least going past it. I think that's the intent, and we can look at that and, you know, use that as a starting point and see where that's at.
And then also realize the distance it is from the main corridor, um, versus this one, and try to figure out what the standard or metric that was used to help determine that sign height.
I don't disagree with the consistency of what Walmart's and what the area is, but there isn't any reason to blow that consistency out of the water.
So that's one thing where I might differ, um, is the fact that if our current code doesn't allow it, consistency doesn't matter, shouldn't matter, uh, to a certain extent. If what's there now could not be built according to our current code, that's not to encourage something that's not per our zoning code.
But that's the purpose of the divergence, right?
That is, yes. Well, usually I consider a divergence for a hardship.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm not sure
Reasonable.
that there is a, a hardship if Menards can make it work or other places can make it work.
I'm, I'm, man, I, I take some approach with the thought of aesthetics, you know? You're driving down and you're coming down, and all of a sudden, everybody else's sign is like X, and then all of a sudden Y, it's like Y. You know, to me, that, that sticks out almost as an offense more than this idea of, no, we wanna be consistent with all of our, and, and I get it, I recognize this is no longer in the code. And if we were building, they were, they weren't next to Walmart? Okay, got you. If you weren't in that kinda area with the rest of the guys, got you. But they're planning next door to competitor or, or whatever, that, you know, I'm, inflation is enough. I, I wanna take every opportunity to drive down as much price as possible. So if, if that means that the sign is, uh, i- in a manner that says, hey, we're here too, then I, I think we, we consider that, that a divergence, I guess. Uh, and just again, for the aesthetic consistency sake of having signs along that little corridor.
There, there are two other things I'd just like to mention with respect to, to our site specifically that I wanna point out as potential hardships. One is the, the northern corridor of that stream corridor protection zone that we're not touching. That environmental covenant is full of, of dense foliage and trees right there. That's gonna continue to remain. And a- as you know, and as I, I believe the, the gentleman here last time spoke to, uh, there is a lot of environmental ecological foliage that's there that's gonna provide screening from being able to see that site. So that site's really only gonna come up when you're on the site. So coming from the, the south, or the north to the south, you're screened from it. Additionally, from the south to the north, you've got the, the out parcels that are located on the Walmart property. And again, so now, now your visibility, a- as opposed to the rest of the commercial corridor, for example, Meyer's is set really far back, you've got no screenage on either side. Menards is another one, they completely cleared their site. You can see that for miles around. So I understand why they may have requested something a little bit smaller. Our site really is a narrow corridor, and in between that, you've got multiple out parcel buildings that are providing that screening as well. So if you wanna truly look at a speed limit and look at a visibility, that the actual seconds that you'll be able to see that building starts becoming very, very small. So, um, please, please take that into consideration when, when you're considering the divergence.
Dustin, if you're moving out south, are, are the outlets going to want monument signs along twenty-three? Or is that gonna be something that's restricted, or?
We will only propose this monument sign as part of this development.
Are the, since the, the fueling station is, is more of a destination, is, is it necessary to have the fuel places on the monument sign? Cause that could shave off a couple of
That is their typical, BJ's typical, um, model. That, that's how they approach all, all of their developments. What you're looking at is, is their, their sign, um, scaled to, to sixteen feet. Honestly, what, what was proposed previously was, was their sign. We've had to reduce it to, and shrink it to, to fit it into the size that we're currently proposing. But, but this is their sign, this is what they're requesting. Um, similar to the Giant Eagle that's located down in the corner that's got a digitized sign, that was the next, the, one of the another things that we need to discuss in conjunction with this sign, is the divergence and allowance of, of digital numbers as well. There's, there's no messaging, i- it's just like the Giant Eagle that's located on the corner as well. So we would definitely respect, one, that to be a, allowed as a divergence, and, and two, um, that is BJ's sign, and it was approved down the road as well.
I will say we, we do not have any signs that are, starting with the digital sign with the fuel pricing that, that are thirteen feet from finished grade. It's thirteen feet and then two feet, a little more than two feet is the sign.
If we were to put the digital sign on the bottom and elevate BJ's Wholesale Club to the top and the gas in the middle, would, would that be something that the township would, would consider?
Is the whole sign illuminated? Like, is, is the, like, the whole two BJ's, is that, does it white?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. I just would be curious to see what it looks like.
Is there a way that you could provide like a nighttime lighting of that, of what it, what it would look like nighttime? How it would shine at night? How it would shine at night?
It appears to be internally illuminated by THO lamps. So, I'm assuming that there's a light in there and you'll see the white and the red. So... My initial response at night is gonna be getting bright. What have we done for other gas stations? Because I think we have allowed digital signs. I just don't think they've been as prominent.
There is a, in recent projects, yes, we've allowed it. Prior, it was, there was enforcement issues.
Okay. So, I mean, if we're allowing digital signage now for the gas numbers, I probably don't have an issue with that if that's like an established precedent, as it were. I think I'm more concerned over the size and location of said numbers than the fact that they're there. I don't know how other people on the commission feel.
No, I agree. I think the sign's too big. Has to change. I've got some other issues too, which we can talk about. I understand it's what they've done, but...
The other issue I was thinking about is the sign location. I understand that it does make sense to be like, you know, farther south in terms of closer to where the main building is. There's a point where I'm concerned that there's that small cut through for the shopping center next to it that is, sort of has a haphazard traffic pattern. And I'm concerned if the sign is too close to that, people will be entering and exiting the BJ's and your site through that little outlaw area by where I think there's a dry cleaner and a battery plus and the Five Guys or whatever else is there in that little retail space. So, I don't know what the township or traffic engineers have commented on, but a lot of people use that area behind the shopping center as a cut through. And that if the sign is too close to that, I'm afraid they will use that as an entrance to your facility.
That is something that is being evaluated by ODOT.
Okay.
And my understanding is that ODOT signed an agreement with the property owner to the south that allowed them to install that right-in, right-out in the northwest corner of what I'll call the Walmart property by the Five Guys cleaners.
I don't know what it's called officially.
North Point is what it's called. And so, they allowed them to install the right-in, right-out at that location based upon four conditions. One of the conditions was that the northern property, our property, would have access to the signalized intersection that they were proposing on their site. There would also be a north-south corridor installed that would allow their property to go to the north and that our property would also allow a connection to the signalized intersection at Hidden Ravines and twenty-three, the one further to the north.
The one by the dental office.
Yeah, correct. And with that being said, that right-in, right-out would then be closed once all of those parameters were met. And that's exactly what we're proposing. Now, we can't dictate what ODOT does with the southern property, but that's exactly what's supposed to happen. Therefore, the entrance and access to our sites are going to be from the North Orange Center extension to the north. There'll be one from Highfield on the east. There'll also be the right-in, right-out on US twenty-three that we're proposing. And then a cross-access easement agreement that's gonna happen with the southern property owner. Now, as you can see from the aerial photo, their out parcels were designed and dedicated to facilitate that cross-access. There's an existing curb cut there. Their buildings are separated. They have a four-way stop at that location. It was always designed to have cross-access at that location.
Does that right-in, right-out to the south there going into North Point, does that have a D cell lane, do you know?
Yeah, it's got a drop turn lane, correct. Yep, so will our right-in, right-out as well.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure what the question is, but to help you understand a little bit more as to the traffic patterns that are occurring at that location, the fuel center is gonna be a one-way in and a one-way out. It's gonna be signed appropriately just like that in a counterclockwise method. Therefore, the only way to get into the fuel center is from the north. You come through the pumps and then you come out through the south and to the east. Therefore, that small intersection that's occurring, that four-way, is only gonna have traffic from one way from the east. So, there's not gonna be two-way traffic there. So, that'll definitely help alleviate the safety and some of the circulation that's occurring at that location. But I think all of this was in the context of a sign location. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, which I think you answered with the ODOT.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
But it has been thought of and considered, basically.
Yeah.
And there will be improvements to that area, although not shown on your plan.
It's not on our site. We can't control it.
Exactly. You have no control.
A bit of a new subject. How many apartments are a single bedroom versus two-bedroom?
There are one hundred and eighty units. There's, I take that back, there's one hundred and sixty units. There's eight buildings with twenty units per building and it's split right in half. Two, half of them, eighty, are one-bedroom. The other half are two-bedroom. And what we were able to do is, based upon the multifamily, as you can see this new layout, includes enough parking where we relocated the clubhouse and the pool further to the south. And we've shoehorned in a lot more additional parking to be able to allow that to be two-point-oh parking spaces for that area. So, before we were at one-five and we included additional parking to get that to two-point-oh.
And what's the initial price for these apartments rental?
They are seven hundred square foot. I don't know the rental. I would assume it's probably, I'm guessing, to be honest with you, I'm not the leasing agent, so...
Yeah.
It's typical with other standards in the area.
So, I had a question and you probably addressed it last time, but I wasn't here. The apartments also seem to have garages with them as well, either one-car or two-car garages. Are those included in the parking count or are they separate from the parking?
That's included in the parking count. So, it's the parking spaces plus the garages is what equals the two-point-oh.
All right, thank you. I just wanted some clarification.
And it looks like on the drawing, there are sidewalks and crosswalks so that people wanted to walk from the apartments to the outbuildings. They could do that?
Yes, that's correct. We provided, and you know, some of this was to be able to, in the spirit of the mixed use and connectivity and how we talked about that, we tried to provide the connectivity through the different uses so that they could get there from the multifamily to the out parcels along that private access drive, which as part of our new submittal, we will be submitting text in there that says that we will privately maintain that. That's not an issue at all. With that, we've also proposed a, I believe it's a mixed-use path on the south side of Orange Center Drive that goes all the way up on the east side of our property along Orange Center. You know, one of the things that I would like clarification on, the last time that we talked, there was discussions that the county engineer did not want to see any connectivity along US twenty-three. So, we removed that. We don't have anything there. But then this new comment came back is that you want this path to come from the out parcels around the fuel center to the west and then connect into what I'll call the laundry facility on North Point property. So, with that, the connection, if you'll notice in that picture, there's no receiving ramp over there. It would, if we propose an ADA compliant detectable warning as that terminus, there's nothing that receives that currently. It's a non-compliant and we don't have the ability to go on their property and do improvement. So, I would recommend something happen that wouldn't potentially extend it all the way to the south like that unless there was something that you could force and comply then to bring up the code as well. So, and the ADA standards require that if you're gonna put in a one-ramp, you must need a receiving ramp. So, for example, like you see some of these intersections, they just got a ramp. That's all they have. They don't have any sidewalks or anything else and that's why you just see the ramp is because that's what the code says. If we're gonna install something that goes to that southern property line, then there would need to be something that receives them on the other side and there isn't currently. Is that still something that the township would like us to do? Is there another alternative that we can propose?
I think we'd be interested in looking at another alternative. You know, we just, staff and I just sketched it out. I mean, we had four days to turn this around, so we didn't have a chance to talk to the engineers and just, you know, we're looking at it as more as connectivity side of it, so if there's an alternative.
I mean, our alternative would be to put it and terminate it along the right-of-way. So, we could take the connectivity that's shown based upon the out parcel, take it through the grass open space between the fuel center and the out parcel to the west and then come down straight as opposed to coming into that shopping center. Therefore, if any improvements were done in the future to the south, they can connect directly into it.
Say that again, Dustin, that the path would go, rather than more of the staff, it is sketch from showing it. We would put it where?
We would just come straight down as opposed to bending back around. You know, because right now, the way that they've got it shown, they want it to go right directly into the out parcel. If we just take it to the south and terminate it, then at this point in time, we don't need a detectable warning. You can just terminate it right there so that if any improvements are done in the south or there's connection done on the south, if there's more bike paths or multi-use paths that are installed on the south, that would be the terminus to pick it up and run it all the way.
Either way, that's gonna be a dangerous pedestrian crossing unless that is improved. Let's be honest. With the traffic that cuts through there.
I think this has always had a problem with traffic. That's why. That hasn't been decided yet. The next thing is, Max, since you didn't know what the price for rental of these apartments, is there any thing that we have to keep an apartment complex from becoming another duly's orchard?
There's not.
There's not.
No, we can't.
Yeah, no.
No.
If we can, just for a second, so we don't get too far along on the board's comments. Dustin, was there anything else in this? Do you want to continue through the list or...?
If you don't mind, yeah, just for clarity. And all of these are covered in the next thing. We've already covered the monument sign and we will look at that and give something to you. You guys are gonna look at the Menards. The rest of that, that's the sign. One divergence can be for all the signs, a rendering for the apartments, property line for the photometrics, the light poles. So, as you can see, they went out and measured them thirty-one to thirty-three and a half foot poles. You know, that's just what we measured as well in our previous assessment. And so, we revised our texts to say that we're going to install light poles in accordance with the rest of the uses along the corridor like we talked about. That is gonna be a divergence from the current standard, which is twenty feet. But again, we're not requesting anything that's not in every single use there. Not just one, but all of the uses along that corridor.
If the commission were to consider this divergence, I think we were just asking for it to provide a maximum height as opposed to saying you're going, you know, to be like the other communities.
That was my comment as well. Is that saying that you're gonna make them like somebody else, but without providing a metric of what that is, thirty-one or thirty-three feet. I want the actual dimension. And then two, for the commission, again, my understanding is thirty-one to thirty-three is no longer per our code. Our code is now about twenty feet. Is that correct? Yes. So, it's sort of like the sign. Just because everybody else is doing it in the neighborhood, it doesn't meet our code because the neighborhood was built before our current zoning code. So, it's a question of, do you want to allow them to do it because everybody else is doing it? Or do you want to enforce our current zoning code?
And last time we talked, we talked about a variety of hardships because of that as well. Because if you were to meet that new code, there's a lot of things that could be discussed with respect to additional landscaping, additional islands. There would be for a lot more poles to be installed. You wouldn't be able to meet the photometrics that would be necessary. The safety issues with some of the dark spots that would now be created because of that. So, what we are requesting is a thirty-two and a half foot pole, similar to, exactly the same what we proposed previously. It is a thirty-two and a half foot pole and we would meet the photometrics. We would meet the spacing, the size, the lighting with the LED.
Your drawing and the things in the parking lot. Are those, would those be where those poles would be located or...?
That is correct. They'll be located in those islands.
So, all of those islands, would all of those islands represent a light pole?
I believe so. Yes, the answer to that is yes. If you lower it, you would have to put in double the amount of islands that were currently showing.
Last time I remember it coming up was the Krogers. You know, I remember they also wanted that. Do you know what those are? Any chance?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we can look into that.
Yeah, I'd look, I'd like to know what those, what we ended up with with that one.
So, I mean, this is actually one of the comments I had. So, if I'm reading this correctly, and maybe I misunderstood your question, Dennis, but the, there's two things on the photometric that I noticed that it appears that we have, you know, several islands without any poles on them. And the ones that do are a dual head where you could potentially put a quad or something to, or maybe add more lighting in the other islands. Is that, am I reading this correctly by saying that? So, for instance, if you zoom in there, Jeff. So, the one, if we're starting at the top row, I only see a light in the far left, the first of the three there. If you come down to the second bank, there's one in the far right. That's a dual head as well. And then if you come down, so that's my interpretation. I guess what I'm saying is if there's a way to get away with twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four foot or maybe somewhere in that range and add a couple more lights in there, that would be, I guess, you know, you're adding more lights, but you're not adding more islands. You're not reducing parking. And that really was what I think the hardship was based on.
So, every island doesn't have a light pole?
It does not appear so, no. I apologize for misspeaking.
But they could.
I mean, with LEDs, I don't say it has to be in every one, but at least if there was two in every bank of three there, I feel like, or maybe it goes two, one, two, like, you know, however that lays out. I mean, obviously, the photometric plans book's gonna tell the light values, but I think there's an opportunity to add more, possibly reduce further from the thirty-two foot poles.
With that being said, we'll evaluate it. There is a maximum value that can be achieved for light pollution and we can't go beyond that. But we will evaluate that and get back to you.
But Dustin, you seem to be surprised that all of these don't have lighting or something.
We've gone back and forth on this photometrics multiple times. There's been iterations. We've looked at photometrics multiple times. So, I'm sorry, we... we, we, we've looked at this in, in a variety of ways. So, I, I mean, at the end of the day, we are, we are requesting a divergence for the thirty-two and a half foot pole, um, just because of, um, what, what we're proposing right now meets the, the photometrics for the site, for the light pollution, um, for the locations, and, and the spirit of, of what's been installed in, in the surrounding areas. Uh, additionally, the, the letter from Delaware County Engineers Office with the Traffic Impact Study, we've received notification from Delaware County that that Traffic Impact Study has been approved. Um, I've also received notification from ODOT as well, but, uh, we'll make sure that that's coordinated with the township as well, and that that's passed along.
Respect to traffic, have you heard from Orange Township Fire?
We have. So we were, we submitted plans to them once, and we received comments back. The comments for Orange Township Fire Department specifically were in reference to the location for the fire hydrant. We were showing three around the building, they wanted a fourth added. And so we, we, we've added that in. We have not resubmitted back to them, because we wanted to have this discussion, get this flushed out, and it's approved through you, um, to see how the impacts may, maybe may before we continue to keep along that track. Some labeling, the commercial budding residential hundred-foot setback, there is that environmental covenant there, there's the streamside setback, so that won't be a problem, we'll just show that. Uh, all changes in uses, we'll specify, uh, we've already talked about the sign, the divergences, the divergences. Delaware County updated letter for the Traffic Impact Study, we've already talked about. Twenty-two lists all the divergences, we'll, we'll do that. Explain the apartment standards, we will do that. Um, we will also include amenities, pool, clubhouse. And then the, these last couple, you know, considering reducing the, the parking, we, that will not, not be feasible as, as part of this. The parking is set to be able to accommodate the use at this time. And consider moving the, the, the retail, I know that was a comment there, and it was also a comment from the Delaware County Regional Commission, that, that this has been established, and this is where it needs to go in order to be able to, to fit what we're proposing on the site. When it comes to the technical comments, the Delaware County from Matt, um, his comment was specifically in reference to extending the easement along that, uh, that, that's swale and ditch, deep run, and we are proposing environmental covenant along there. So that drainage, the environmental covenant is a drainage easement, so that, that addresses his comment specifically. Traffic impact study was going to be approved, and then we talked about the path. So one of the other things is that, uh, Mike Love would prefer there to not be a path on Unit Twenty-three, which we took off. We removed the path, but the township requests there be sidewalk path that runs north-south to connect to the Walmart area. We talked about that, we'll, we'll propose something that potentially terminates maybe further to the west as opposed to where we're showing it, so that there doesn't need to be a receiving ramp. Um, and then the high field access joint to Walmart, there's a variety of reasons why that, that's not going to be feasible because of traffic that, that occurs for loading and for accessibility on their property. That access drive was designed for their property, that access drive was designed to accommodate the, the traffic that would be generated through their property. We, we're going to be doing the exact same thing. Combining them together would, would not be feasible, wouldn't be safe, it wouldn't, wouldn't be something that I, I think or propose, um, as part of this development. It's, uh, and then in favor of the path along Orange Center, looking to make options to cross, and then it still shows east side, the township would like to see path cross to the west, to the northern apartment entrance, and then run north along the township cemetery. And then there was a, a picture associated with that, we talked about this last time, you know, you're on a curve, you're on a curve with, with, with a road, you're also on a location where that road tapers at that location, and it's right before a bridge. Uh, it would not be safe to, to have a pedestrian, mid-block pedestrian crossing at that location. We, we don't propose that, we don't suggest it, you know, what we propose is what, what we've got is a, uh, a very wide mixed-use path on the east side that crosses over the bridge, it goes up to the intersection, and then you'd be able to cross safely at that intersection. That intersection is, is at least going to have a stop sign right there as opposed to mid-block. I don't think that you should put PNO, um, striping in that location there as well to do mid-block. So we, we strongly suggest that that's not recommended or proposed.
For, for township staff, uh, comments are, they're trying to get connectivity up to hidden ravines. Uh, currently, there's a path here that comes across, there's no access coming here, there's a culvert, there's a culvert here, or a drainage here, there's one here, there's a big utility box here. So with this ending down here, getting it to access through the condo association's property and up is going to be difficult for the township to try to get that access, so we're going to have a path that goes to nowhere. Um, so that is why they're suggesting that it comes across to the west side of Orange Center Drive, as this is township property, and will have better ability to change the layout here, to have a path run up, come up here, cross here, we, and their, their plan is to have a path eventually, get a path to run down here to Twenty-three, as there is a path on the other side, and will have access all the way along east of the ravines.
Did, did, did staff comment on the applicant's comments last time, or concerns about placing it on the other side, for those made aware to?
Yeah, and that, and this was the, their concern for the staff was trying to get it to, how they come up here. I'm happy to set up a discussion with Operations Department to discuss crossing point or, or anything.
I'm assuming that's going to be twenty, twenty-five?
I believe it's twenty, I believe it's twenty-five now.
Personally, it, this is, if I'm speaking out of turn, I apologize, but the, the access drive to the multifamily that's currently north of that pond, it, it would be safer to cross at that intersection to the west than it would be on the taper, on the, the curve, uh, right at, at our, at our property line, right before the stream. I, I would, I would want that crossing personally to be farther to the north, away from the bridge, the culvert, the guardrail, away from the, the pond even, away from the stream, and, and away from the curve. So if there was some difficulty of being able to extend it on the east side north of there because of the utilities that are located there, yeah, I would still cross it at that location, and, and consider that more of, of a junction like a four-way than, than I would in a mid-block crossing as proposed.
I, I think, you know, the operations department's not here tonight, so if we can, we can coordinate that, and then, you know, we'll, we'll get a response.
The only thing I will note, that I do know, pedestrians are walking right now on the side of the road, uh, from those locations, um, to the Walmart shopping center area, so, uh, if the township could try to figure out a safe way, especially if this development moves forward.
Ma'am, what, we'll, we'll get to public comment here soon.
Exactly.
Um, I mean, Dustin, obviously, the goal here is, well, let me step back. So, given the nature of this, you know, the, the, this development, if, if we had it, which we're working on it, a mixed use, you know, this is probably the, would be a close path, but, but the, the thing with mixed use and, and I guess, what's been so successful at a community like Evans Farm is, is the connectivity and, you know, the pedestrian circulation. So our, our goal here and what we're trying to achieve, and I think you understand this, is, is that we're trying to make those connections both, you know, off-site and then within the site as well. So, um, you know, this isn't just a, a large grocery store or retail tenant with, with multifamily mixed in, and, and there's no, you know, connectivity between the two. And that's, that's really what we're trying to achieve here, um, and is the basis of this discussion. So I think that, you know, if there's a way, we can all work on this together and figure out a way to, to make those connections in a safe manner is, is ultimately the goal. Okay, so is there any?
I think that was well spoken. Um, this is just my perspective since I wasn't here last time, I apologize if this was discussed, but the, between the BJ's Big Box and then the three out parcels, outlots, whatever you want to call them, potential, I don't know, Panera or something like that, or, you know, fast food, or, uh, what have you. And then the apartment complex, there would be an opportunity for lots of, you know, pathways and green spaces and areas that the community and the apartments could use that I don't see on the current plans, um, that would sort of make a nice mixed use where people could live in the apartments and walk places, um, to go to a restaurant or go to a store or something like that, that it seems very compartmentalized. And my concern is that if you have a, an apartment complex behind the BJ's, um, or behind the Walmart or something like that, that it's so cut off, that it's not going to be mixed use, that it's not going to be an inviting place to live, and that it might not be as successful as the township would like. Is that a fair, I'm not quite sure how the commission feels about it, but?
I agree. Yeah, I mean, it's not just about the connections within the site, but also our surrounding sites, so, you know, to the, the neighbors to the north and, and all surrounding this property is, is getting access to all those things.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so, any other comments on the path before we get into? Did you want to go through the staff comments as well, or was there anything in there additional? Dustin, I don't, I don't know if you said there were?
I think, I think we've covered, it's a duplication of comments.
Yeah, yes, okay, it's pretty much.
Actually, I have one question about parking spaces, and I don't know if it was addressed or not. When I looked it over, it looked like we had two different sized parking spaces, the, um, nine foot by twenty for the retail, and then the nine foot by eighteen foot for the, um, apartment complex. And I couldn't quite figure out where the parking for the apartment complex stopped and where the retail started. And then the other concern on that is I really, some municipalities have nine by eighteen parking spots, but then they take the two extra feet and they put it in the drive aisle, so then you have a larger drive aisle, like a twenty-four drive aisle as opposed to the twenty drive aisle. So I wanted to know, uh, where that variance or divergence, excuse my language, stood, um, with the staff comments or what was discussed last time, and, you know, what the need was, what was going on there? Do we have larger drive aisles? Is it just we're more compact because it's a residential area for the apartments? What's the logic and where's this going? And if you don't want to address it now, but later, I understand, but I just wanted some answers on that.
Yeah, I mean, we, so in the last discussion, what we talked about is we were, we were low on parking for the multifamily. Um, and I believe that's when that change was made, correct? To, to make up, to get to that two, what was it, two?
Two point oh.
Two point oh.
Okay.
So. Go ahead, Dustin.
Previously, we, we proposed a density of one point five, we were requesting a divergence in that area, and part of the reason is, is because of the, the nature of, of multifamily in the market today, there, you're not seeing the, the large, um, three-car homes, you're not, in, in addition, there are one bedroom and two bedroom, you know, we're, we're thinking it's going to be the empty nesters, it's going to be the millennials, the younger individuals that, that want to be able to, to live in an area that has pedestrian connectivity to some of the out parcels and some of the amenities that are going to be in the area. So with that, you're going to be seeing roughly that, that one to two car. So what we discussed at that point in time was being able to, um, not necessarily, uh, increase the size of the space, but increase the number of parking spaces that we're proposing. And so we went from a one point five density to a two density. We talked about that, one of the reasons why we're proposing larger space in the commercial development is because of the carts and some of the things you're going to be getting, your big coffee and, and your, your large popcorn. But when the multifamily, one, some, a lot of them are garage uses already, but the, the other ones are going to either be visitors or ancillary uses, secondary cars of that nature, so that they can be a little bit smaller, they're, they're not going to be the, the grocery-getting cars necessarily. So we were proposing a much smaller use there.
Okay, so, and I assume the fire department doesn't have an issue with the drive aisles around the apartment complex in terms of access?
That's correct, yeah. The radiuses and the widths have, have all been verified by this.
So then where exactly does the residential parking end and the retail parking start? Because, uh, it looks like it should be where that burn or green space is, but I'm not quite sure, because some of those spaces are closer to your outlots, and they actually are to your apartment complex?
Everything that we're proposing for the smaller spaces is north of the, the, the green space.
Okay.
And east of the retention pond being what you see there, or, or east of Orange Center Drive.
Okay.
So, and, sorry, just real quick, the, the parking spaces up around the multifamily, all of that is curbed, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's not going to be a curb stop or anything up in those parking stalls?
Only for the ADA compliant.
Right, right.
But, but yes, outside of that.
So it's not going to reduce that even further by putting those in, so that's, that's good.
Are there going to be any treatment of that landscape area separating sort of the, uh, residential parking from the commercial parking below?
Yeah, we're proposing trees and shrubs. Um, there, there is a slight graded mound in that area, uh, they're considering a, a potential fence as well, decorative fence.
I was just curious, because on your plan, there's no distinction, um, and they just seem to merge together, um, which I guess if you want shared parking, that's fine, but, uh, I don't think that's the goal here, so that you might want?
Well, and, and there, there's the thing, you, you'll see the, we did provide an exhibit that had the table on it. Um, if we did do shared parking, the out parcels are overparked, and so i- i- if you wanted to do and, and consider it holistically, which I hate that word, but it's, it's more, it's going to be like two point five or even greater, we, we would almost get to that threshold of three.
I know, I think we had shared parking provisions at Evans Farm, so it's not totally
Hey, so, um, now that we've gone through the comments, is there anything that the board has in addition to these that they want to bring up at this time? Any concerns, questions?
I have one, but I'm not sure how much Dustin knows about, about BJ's. I, I see they're, they're working with tires, and I looked online, they do sell tires. Do they have, do any other automotive services?
My understanding is no, that, and that was something that we looked at when, when we went and tried to define what an auto-oriented use was, and so that they just do tires. Uh, I do not believe that they do oil changes or anything else of that nature.
I, I didn't see that when I looked them up today, I just, just saw tires, that they sell them and install them.
Correct, that's it.
Where's the nearest BJ's that's lost?
I believe one was installed in New Albany recently. Um, I, I guess, I, I think so. Don't quote me on that, I was not involved in that, I'm sorry.
BJ's used to be in Columbus though.
I don't think so. Oh, they did?
They did?
They did. I'm.
Where were they located?
Yeah.
Dustin, you didn't, unless I missed it, you didn't submit a grading plan, did you?
No, we have one if you'd like to see one.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful, I, I, I'm, I mean, this site's, with the exception of the stream is fairly flat, if that's, if I'm, if that's correct.
It's about a six to seven foot fall from the south to the north, so everything drains to the stream as you would anticipate, and the high point, interestingly, is, is actually on the, uh, the northeast corner. I'm sorry, the southeast corner. So it all comes from the southeast to the north.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to see that. Um, are, are you guys, are you guys doing a, a borrowed pit or anything, you know?
We're doing two large detention ponds, so because of that, we're balancing the site based upon the excavation that's occurring.
Okay, so those spoils are going to go into the site somewhere?
Correct. You know, we, when we've done geotechnical borings and soil analysis, there, there's gray soil out there, so.
All right, any other comments from the? All right, any other comments from the board before we do public comment?
Just a quick one, you, you know what the square foot of, of this BJ's building is?
A hundred thousand square feet.
And last one, I, I'm really kind of curious, it looks like BJ's has structured themselves much like Costco. You know, the Costcos pretty much sit outside of residential areas, you know, to where they can, they can be big, bright. And it looks like this BJ's has kind of arranged themselves to be similar. I'm kind of, I'd love to have a location where I could look at, see where was these other BJ's located, what was around them, what was their vicinity?
There is one in New Albany, I just Googled it.
Okay, I was trying to Google it.
I think it's relatively new and it's in the Hamilton, I think it's called the Hamilton Quarters Development. So there is one.
It says they're returning to Columbus.
Yeah, they're returning to Columbus Market.
So it's on Hamilton Road somewhere?
Uh, yeah, out in that newer part of the Hamilton Road, New Albany area.
Although.
Yeah.
All the roundabouts are probably north, that's a guess on my part, but.
Yeah, it's on the northern, northern part of.
Yeah.
Of New Albany, yeah. So there is one. And it's a hundred thousand square feet, so.
All right.
So I did have a couple of comments. Are you sure? Okay. One is to sort of reiterate the, you know, mixed use neighborhood component that we'd like to see that, you know, we had at Evans Farm. It seems like you made comparisons between Evans Farm and this site, yet I don't see like the connectivity that we had at Evans Farm or that we encouraged at Evans Farm to try to make it a desirable place to live with a mix of uses, so you would have a walkable community. So I sort of like to, if you're going to make that comparison, I don't see it, it needs to be there. And I assume Michelle and staff has already addressed this, but just to make sure, BJ's, the, when I looked at the elevations of the building, my first concern was high chroma colors and things of that nature. And I don't know, you know, I know they have that corporate red. Generally, we don't have high chroma colors in the township. If, if there's a way to sort of improve the look so it looks less like a red warehouse or a big red barn and make it look sort of more desirable. I know a lot of big box stores, they have like grades or series of elevations and materials that they use depending upon locale. So I'd like to see sort of some work on that. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that, but.
I mean, I, I, I agree. I think that, well, I know at least the, the, the building that Five Guys is in is, is a lot of brick. And I think if it, if it had, and I'm not saying brick is the answer, but I think if it was more harmonious with that, you know, rather than a metal.
With spectrum.
Structure, yeah, or something where it just, it, if there was a way to integrate it a little better to the surrounding context, I, I think that's a good.
So that's just.
I mean, I, obviously, you know, being in the industry, I understand there's, there's standards for, you know, brand and all that. And, and, you know, there's certain things that they're not willing to deviate from, but if there is any way we can make those, I guess harmonious is the best word I can think of, but.
Or a little more, let's like a warehouse, barn, but more.
We have some language we can use.
Okay. All right. In terms of materials that would make it a more potentially desirable locale to go to and also make it more residents are living there in this complex, to make it a more desirable locale to live. I think I've said enough.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll open up the meeting to public comment. And I'll just restate that if you are going to speak, please state your name and address.
My name is Jean Wolfe, 8224 Copper Top Lane. I live in the, that picture was where I live. And my first concern is the traffic. 23 is already a nightmare. I just worry about the entrance being from East Hidden Ravines and onto Orange Center Drive and people cutting through that area right behind my house. I, I just would encourage you to think long and hard about putting something like this next to a community that's, that ranges in price from 300,000 to $450,000 homes. But the entrances to the development from the north, I think is going to end up coming on East Hidden Ravines Drive, turning, turning right onto Orange Center. It's going to increase the, the traffic in my neighborhood. And to your point, Christine, I don't walk on 23, I don't mean to imply that, but I do use Orange Center Drive as a place where I walk. I have sent multiple emails to Jeff, to Jeff. But, and the residential units, I feel like are an afterthought, maybe making it more palatable to the surrounding area. I'm wondering if the Giant Eagle on 23 could be a, a site for this development, for this enterprise? I don't know, since they're gone, a use for that building. I just urge the zoning commission to consider the development carefully to, and determine the, the, the impact on the surrounding communities and the natural area. I guess the trees are going to stay, you know, that are surrounding the ravine. Is that correct? Yep. Another concern that came up during the meeting is the truck, the truck traffic. Where are the trucks coming into to deliver merchandise? I don't know where that's happening. And if it's for only members, as far as the signage is concerned, if it's only members, your members are going to know where, where it is. And as somebody pointed out the last meeting, Menards doesn't have any trouble finding, having people find their location and their setback from the road. And I think that's about all.
You said your name is Jean?
Pardon me?
Jean, is that your name?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Jean.
And thank you for your consideration.
Yep. Dustin, is there anything you want to address out of those comments?
Just to clarify, there are some trees that'll be coming down. We did get a permit from the Ohio Fish and Wildlife Services to, we also did a bat survey during COVID and did sound testing for bats and things of that nature so that we could be able to get the correct permit to be able to cut down trees. We got a five-year permit to cut down trees on the entire site. With that being said, we're only taking down trees in locations that are outside of that environmental covenant and that natural corridor that we're going to continue to root in and the northern property. So those additionally, we're proposing a lot more landscape on site to mitigate the trees that we're impacting. The, the, the traffic that's going to be generated along Orange Center Drive, that Orange Center Drive was originally installed as a roadway to be able to connect to the, further to the south. It was always intended to be connected further to the south. It was always intended to connect into US 23 to the west as proposed originally 13 plus years ago with the original development. So that, that traffic, that road and everything there, what was all already developed as part of the rest of the master plan in that area.
It's, and just on, on one more thing that Jean mentioned, I, and I'm making an assumption here, I just, maybe you can verify if this is accurate, the, can you scroll down a little bit? So the rear of the anchor tenant there, BJ's, that's where the majority, or actually, that's where probably all of your deliveries are going to be coming in.
That's correct. So the idea is very, very similar to the way that Walmart was originally intended to be installed, which is a different story than how it actually occurs, but it's supposed to come from Highfield. So there is a signalized intersection to the south by McDonald's. You can either go to the east and then go up Highfield that way, or you can also come from the south and go along Hidden Ravines to Highfield and come in from the east. And so that area back in, in that southeast corner has been designed and dedicated to allow trucks to come in back. We've, we've done turning movements in that area so that they can back in there appropriately. We don't want them to come from Walmart's property through the out parcels and, and come from the south. We don't want them to come from the right in, right out with the pedestrian connectivity. We don't want them to come from the, the mixed use multifamily. We want them to come from the east. So that's another reason why that access point was, was designed and dedicated for that reason.
The occurrence, I mean, it's all right if you don't know it, but the occurrence of the deliveries is that, do you know how often they're having deliveries?
I don't. I, I would be guessing if I told you.
Yeah.
When, I mean, with that being said, it would never, could, I, I'm assuming it's going to be early in the morning, late at night, typical to other uses, you know, like a delu trading company, they always come, you know, late, late at night and deliver or very early in the morning because they, they don't have the loading zones like we've got here. They don't got the loading docks. And additionally, you know, some of those, those big rigs will be parked there for, for a period of time to be able to allow the unload and loading. I mean, this is a hundred thousand square foot commercial use, so there'll be quite a bit going in.
Is there anything, I, I guess I would ask the board, is there anything on the list of divergences that seem to be a, a sticking point? I mean, we, we obviously talked about the monument sign height, the, the lighting height as well. I know we kind of focus on those more than the other ones, but is there anything in addition that we want to cover just so it's clear to Dustin what changes, if any, need to occur?
And I would bring up the permitted uses too.
Yes, yeah.
So granted, I already have issues with the sign. I have issues with the light, height. I have issues the way right now we have a divergence for the apartment complex. I understand why they're requesting it for a mixed use community, but I don't see the mixed use being there right now. So I have issue granting a divergence for something that's supposed to be like a mixed use.
Sure. And just, so our 2018 comprehensive land use plan, we did identify that area as a mixed use, so I mean, it's worth considering. It just, you know, just have that in.
So, well, like I said, I, I don't see it, so I would have issue in the current layout with that divergence. We gave it at Evans Farm, but we went through almost a year plus of negotiations to try to get that to work. So.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I think, I think this BJ's was designed to go into another area, not, not sit here in a highly congested area. I have, do have a problem with the sign height. I do have a problem with the light, the light height. I do also have a problem, Dustin, I think you've probably done as good a job as you possibly can, but I, I really needed those apartments to be sold to me, you know, as something with, with respect to, here's what they are, here's the way they're designed, here's the materials, here's what, what the rental price is going to be, because my fear is that this whole thing in five years, 10 years becomes a low end neighborhood, very bright, sitting in the middle of Orange Township, I'm not in favor.
There's a sea of parking and.
Can I say a few things? My name is Mark Under, I guess I'm the applicant. We appreciate your time, we appreciate your input. We've worked hard to try to meet all your expectations and try to comply. You know, we've owned this piece of property for 20 years, maybe, maybe more than 20. It's really the last undeveloped piece in that stretch. And part of that is because it does not have great access, it does not have great visibility. So if you look to the shopping center to the south, the way that's constructed and that building's perpendicular to 23, it's created a hardship for us to try to utilize the property. We've had opportunities to develop it with other tenants and quite honestly, we've never been successful because of the challenges that the site faces. It's a tough site. I mean, think about it. We have very limited access, very little visibility. If you're driving from the south to the north, you don't see our site until you're almost past it. So we understand zoning codes, we develop properties all over the country, we work with every major retailer, but this one has been very challenging for us. We'll do our best to try to comply with all your requests, but when you evaluate it, we'd like to, for you to consider the difficulties and part of the reason the site is still sitting there 20 years later. Everything around us has been developed. It's, it's the last major site. We have not had, quite honestly, that many opportunities to develop it. And we work with every retailer in the country. So please consider that when you make your decisions or recommendations. But keep in mind, we, we are doing our best to comply, but we're doing a balancing act between this and what the tenant will require in order to move forward. It's, it's a challenge. We've all got challenges, your jobs are not easy, so.
Has your tenant required the extra light height? And of course, that is their sign, so that's their sign height. They've required those things.
Yes. That, that is, when, when they look at the site, I mean, I spoke to their real estate person again this afternoon, we went through the list. His comment is the higher the light pole, the less dark, shadowy spaces you get, the better illumination and the safer the parking lot feels. They also don't want a sea of parking lights that block the visibility and kind of clutter it up. The, the sign requirement is significant on their part because they realize the site has limited visibility. It's, they're, retailers are a challenge, right? There are a handful.
I, I see your visibility issue, especially coming north to south, you know?
Yes.
That's the one that does really exist.
Yeah, so I think they would, they can't understand, and I understand your rationale, but they can't understand why the guy next to them gets this gigantic sign and they're being asked to put an eight foot sign. I, we understand zoning codes, I deal with this all over the country, I get it, I'm just telling you what they're telling me. Is that, how can the guy next door have this gigantic thing? I can explain it all day long, but.
Yes, you are constrained by the Walmart next to it.
Yes.
My issue is I don't like that Walmart center. I use it, yes, because I live in the community.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, you know, use the restaurants, the stores there, stuff like that, but I wouldn't approve that today.
No, I, I totally, I get it.
I wouldn't, I don't like to see a parking, you'd even talk in the township about trying to take some of the parking that isn't at the Walmart and turn it into outlots.
Right.
Because I've never seen that parking lot full, even for Thanksgiving sales, you know? So by, I don't want to replicate a model that I think is a high soul for the community. Now, this is just me and other people on the commission might feel differently. Now, this is just me and other people on the commission might feel differently, but I understand the predicament. How can they can do it next door? Well, next door no longer meets code and quite frankly, next door is not really um, a high level of contribution. It could be a lot more, the Walmart center.
I don't disagree.
Than what it is right now.
I don't disagree with you.
And so that's why I'm conflicted and that's why, you know, I don't want the Walmart height. I don't want the Walmart sign. I don't want the sea of parking because I see what it's done to Walmart. I see what it's done to Myers. And I, I would like to see a um, a higher use for new development in this community.
Did you ever consider condos versus apartments?
Um, we, we really haven't. We're, we're not a big condo and apartment development company.
Right.
In fact, one of the reasons we're doing apartments is because you wanted apartments.
Yeah.
So it's not our specialty. But we were trying to comply and give the community what they're asking for. So we said we do apartments. We have some, we do own apartments, but not that many, and that's not really our specialty. There, there was other discussion about BJ's operation. BJ's is not a Costco. They, they don't deal as much with commercial tenants. They deal more with families. So for instance, their packaging, this is what, because I've been dealing with them for a year and a half. Their packaging, things come in smaller packaging. It's, it's just a different mentality. And, and they're not trying to be Costco, but they're really trying to serve more families, which is why they want to be in a more neighborhood environment. Um, and they're, you know, they want to know what they can do to help the community that they serve. They're good corporate citizens. But it, it is a little different animal than Costco or Sam's Club.
Well, you know, I, I like your project. I like the fact that BJ's wants to locate themselves here because they are a smaller version than you go to Costco, not that Costco doesn't do the smaller stuff, but
Right.
Uh, the fact that BJ is more of a family-oriented stuff versus Sam's and other, other things. Certainly encourage, if there's one that's here open, that, uh, to go ahead and check it out. Uh, but, and I also like the apartments. I mean, I, I think multifamily is good for uh, this area and I think that we should encourage it. And if you follow the script for that, we should continue to, to, to push that forward. Certainly there's some other variant stories that, you know, concerns. I like the consistency story personally. Uh, because I, you know, just so that we have a consistent look across the board and that's what I advocate for. So I, I, I hope at the end of the day that um, the commission and this group will, will, you know, with whatever the qualification that is, that, that is approved. Because at the end of the day, if it's just a vacant spot that's been vacant for 20 years, you said it's the last spot to be developed, what are we going to put there? And we might as well maximize the moment where families can enjoy themselves and also our community be able to come next door and do some shopping and those sorts of things. So I encourage the, the enterprise as much as possible.
As far as low-income housing, I mean, I think that, I'm not the apartment guy. But, you know, the, the rents are not going to be low-end rents because today the cost to build apartments is significant. Construction costs are higher than they've ever been. But I think when you step back and look at it, I don't know what a premium rent in that area is, but it'll have to be a premium rent. And, and most of the stuff we have, which isn't a lot, is more expensive rent. I mean, it's like, we own a, an apartment complex in Bexley called Cassidy Arms. We just emptied the whole thing out and redid it and it probably doubled the rents. Not saying we're not in favor of low-income housing, because.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, that, that's really um, not an appropriate consideration for the zoning commission to, to be talking about. I mean, so I, I just kind of want to nip, nip, nip that conversation in the bud.
The rents would be premium rents. And I think, I mean, that's the only way you can build apartments. Cost is higher than it's ever been, so that.
Hey, you're building a quality product. At the end of the day, the market dictates what the cost is, quality product for families. We're welcome.
We, we are, as a company, we almost never sell property. So we've got shopping centers that we've owned 30, 40, 50 years. The apartments I'm referencing, we've owned probably 40 years. We're, we're not a merchant builder. We build things. We hold on to things. Sometimes we hold on too long, but we're not, we're not usually a seller. So we're, we're in it for the long term. We don't cut corners. We try to build things that'll last, so.
You know, I am curious though, just out of business reasons. BJ's broke from Columbus years ago.
Yes.
And I don't know if you've had this conversation with me. What, certainly this county is growing tremendously, growing fast and so forth. What do they believe has changed in market? Of course, Columbus is growing. I believe some balances lots of demand.
True.
Uh, and certainly the, the idea of having competition, I'm all in favor of because if I can get, if I can get gas cheaper, I drive all the way over to Wal to Sam's Club and saw him, he was just getting gas. What do they believe has changed in this market that says, we really want to be back in that?
Sure. So I think as a company, it, it was more the company than the market.
Okay.
So when they first came to the market, you know, that they were, they're really a different company than they are now. They'd gone through iterations. They went private, then they became public and then um, they probably weren't as good an operator as they are today. But they've been in the northeast this whole time operating. Uh, the real estate wasn't that great that they were in and, and one of the, the site in Reynoldsburg was ours. And it wasn't a great site. The one in Dublin was a Dublin Village Center.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of tucked away.
Yeah, it was hidden.
And, you know, it didn't work and they pulled out of the market. But when they, when they pulled out of the market, you know, they negotiated a fair settlement. It wasn't like they moved out in the middle of the night, but I think they've, they've grown and become a different company than they were. And uh, you know, they're, they're in an expansion mode. And that, you know, the site, the site in New Albany is at Hamilton Road and 161. Obviously, it's exploding even, even before the announcement a few weeks ago, so.
And I know, I think in the Houston market and the suburbs, I'm pretty sure BJ, where they have some places there, I mean, they are
Yeah.
Just in absolute demand and.
Yeah. I think what they tell me is what differentiates them from Sam's and Costco is the packaging and just a different environment and different, it's a smaller store. And a Costco, I think is 200,000 square feet. This is 100,000 square feet. I think when you go in and buy toothpaste instead of a 24-pack, it's a six-pack. I mean, it's, it's, as crazy as that is, it's, you know, so. Any other questions? Happy to answer them, but appreciate your time and your input and.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, so obviously I think, I think we still have a lot, a lot to do here. Obviously tonight, we, we might be taking a vote or making a determination uh, based on staff comments and, and as well as regional planning. I, I guess, so my recommendation, and I'll let the board comment on this if they want, but is that we, you know, we obviously take a, a continuation on this, but we um, we allow enough time for us to, you know, properly go through these light items and, and one by one and, and make sure that we're all clear on, you know, what needs to happen. Um, obviously, we're all here to bounce questions off of as well as the staff and, and I would encourage maybe, you know, if, if you could do a, a, a meeting with them to, to kind of go through maybe some of the ones that, you know, I, I, as you went through the list tonight, there's some that you said, yeah, no problem, we'll do them. Some of them you said, uh, we'll, we'll try to make improvements. But, you know, as you work through those, as far as, you know, just using lighting as a reference, if you find out we can add three more lights on here and drop these down to 26 feet or something. Um, you know, those things, is that, is that going to be acceptable? So on, come this last meeting, we're all prepared and we can take a vote.
Yeah, if I, if I, if I can just chime in.
Yeah.
So, you know, based on everybody's feedback here, in addition to our comments, um, I'd like the staff and I to update this memo. Um, and then have the meetings with the operations department and potentially the applicant to review these together. So I mean, it is going to take us a couple of weeks to really narrow that down, so I'd appreciate, or I respect the time on that. And um, you know, with that, I also would like, once we have a finalized comment sheet, I'd ask for the applicant to respond to each one of these comments. So if they aren't going to be addressing them, at least provide reasoning to why.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I will say on this last one, I think we probably rushed this meeting only because we didn't give staff enough time to do their review and, and we received these today at noon and, and I'm only speaking for myself. I were, didn't even have time really to go through this, so. You know, I'm, I'm sure that some of the other board members agree, but um, I think that if we go through this, then that's going to set us up for, you know, a successful final meeting, so. The next meeting I think we have on schedule is March 8th.
Yeah, and then the following one is the 22nd. If we need, if you guys need more time, or if the applicant needs more time.
Uh, okay, yeah. I mean, do you have a preference, March 8th or? Okay.
Um, I, I guess that definitely puts some pressure on the calendar team. Gather the comments on yourself, organize them, and then we can sit down and have a discussion. We definitely are very willing to make a disposition of our responses to all of those comments. Um, I think that would happen after we got a chance. We want to sit down with ourselves and others to be able to just get final clarification on everything moving forward, so. Uh, today is the 8th, like it was 31, 30 days of 28, so 28 days approximately. So exactly four weeks from today, we could get the information to you the, the first week of, of March, if we could have that prior to then. I know that puts pressure on everybody. We definitely respect us if we could meet that, March 8th deadline.
Does, does March 8th work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, and then we'll, this will do. Um, any other comments before we vote for continuation?
I have just two, two comments real quick.
Sure.
Can you just explain the drive-through to me so I understand? I was looking at other things while you're.
Sure, absolutely. The, the drive-throughs are located on the southern face of each of those out parcels.
So you'll be removing the patio?
That, that one, so the, the patio is going to stay. Um, that southern one is going to have a, a cut-in. So you'll go through the drive-through and then you'll cut out into the actual drive aisle itself. So similar to like Starbucks has that. You, you, you've probably seen the patio that's, that's located there. You go through the drive-through and then you cut out around their, uh, their, their patio in Starbucks.
Can that be shown on the plans?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. We'll, we'll clarify that.
And then my other comment, I know uh, since FIRE has not seen these plans, uh, they only saw the first set, which showed the clubhouse and the pool here. And all this is usable open space. Um, and, and this went away when it went from a 1.5 spaces divergence request to 2.0. Um, staff was okay with the 1.5 divergence request as uh, the overlay district uh, standards are one to three spaces per dwelling unit. Um, so um, trying to make it a more walkable community, more usable community, we would like the more usable open space option. But I don't know how the commission feels about that, um, but I do not know. Based on this setup, I'm not sure if that meets fire department turning radiuses and, and those kind of issues that could come up with this. Um, since the FIRE has not reviewed these plans, I, I'm not sure what their comments will be with that. Those are just some thoughts on that.
I'll go on record. I don't have a problem with parking, especially if there is, look at the community as a whole. There's lots of parking there. Usually I, I don't have a problem reducing the amount of parking. Or more space or more walkable site, or a site with more amenities.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I, it was my comment. I, I preferred trying to get closer to what, what the code was requiring for parking spaces. I, I, what I didn't want to happen was, you know, us not have enough. I, with the understanding that there's garages on these units. I think the, the previous plan, you know, wasn't showing it, uh, but, you know, I may be alone on that, so. You know, I guess the, the option is yours if, if you want to go back to the older layout where there's more green space.
We, we would definitely like more green space in that area, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I, 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 I think it's, um, additionally, like I, like I mentioned in answering to your question as well, the out parcels are overparked. So i- if there was, if you wanted to look at it holistically, the, the out parcels are overparked. There could be shared, shared parking. We didn't necessarily propose that, although we're showing the, the parking there, so we would like it to go back to the original layout with the green space and that location.
So you would be moving the pool and the?
The, the pool and clubhouse are going to go back to the original position along the, the north-south corridors.
Progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just.
And confusion, right?
I would just consider working on the layout of the units and the parking clubhouse and pool to make it more user-friendly and less parking-heavy as a, as a family.
How low would you go?
Well, I don't know. I don't have your client, so.
Okay.
Because we all know a lot of what we design depends upon the client.
All right. Anything else? Good break. Good job. All right, um, can I get a motion for a continuation of uh, rezoning application 01-21-07 to uh, March 8th, 2022 at 6:30 PM?
Second.
Motion made to continue application zone-21-07 to March 8th at 6:30 PM by Mr. Pierce, signed by Mr. McNulty, Liz Buddy, Mr. Mohavich.
Yes.
Mr. McNulty.
Yes.
Mr. Bellis.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Kears.
Thank you very much for your time and attention and patience on this project. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, well, I think that's all we had for tonight, so. All right, meeting adjourned.